Good evening, everybody. It's 6:00 PM and time to open the December 8th, 2021 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. In taking role, I see we have four commission members present, so we have a quorum. We will proceed with the meeting. So everybody had a chance to review the draft minutes, and are there any issues or exceptions to that? And then being heard will approve the minutes. Mr. Meesmer or Ms. Morgan, do we have any correspondence?
Mr. Chair. I'd just like to mention that given the upcoming holiday, we'll be canceling the December 22nd meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. That was one of my questions for the evening.
I will send out a notice to everybody.
Very good. We'll proceed to new business. We have two items on the docket tonight. Public hearing SDP 2021-10 Flounders Bay Joint Use Dock Project and public hearing SDP 2021-11 Smith Dock Project. We'll start with the Flounders Bay Joint Use Dock Project. And I see we have a staff presentation. Go right ahead.
So I'll go ahead and get started. We have two shoreline permits on the agenda tonight. They are both very similar in scope, but because one of the project is for joint use docks and the other is for a single use dock, we separated them accordingly, just so it was easier for review and application. So we'll kick it off with SDP 2021-0010, and this is for those joint use dock projects. This is an SDP permit with SEPA review for the replacement of three existing joint use docks at three separate locations within the Skyline subdivision. The applicant for this project, as well as the next one, is TZ Engineering. So a little project history. On March 2nd, we held the mandatory pre-application meeting for this project, and with this, it did include the permit you'll be hearing about later, as well as when we heard a couple weeks ago, so they were just kind of lumped together. And on the 12th, we had that neighborhood meeting, same scope, included all the work that was going to be occurring on Skyline. On the 14th, the formal application was submitted. On October 12th, staff did deem it complete for processing. And on October 27th, the public notice, which included the notice for public hearing, was published in the newspaper. On the 26th of November, that is when the comment period ended, and staff reviewed and issued the SEPA determination on November 30th. So for this project, like I said, three locations. We'll kind of go through each location, just so there's no confusion. So for location one, there's currently two existing single use docks, which will be removed and replaced with one new joint use dock. So this would include 336 square feet, which would be secured in place with two 12-inch steel pilings. It would include an eight-foot by 42-foot float, as well as a 40-by-four-foot graded ramp. So for location number two, this includes the removal of the existing 324-square-foot joint use dock, which will be replaced with a smaller 299-square-foot joint use dock. The new one will be, again, secured in place with two steel pilings, which includes removing the four existing creaseau pilings. And it will have an eight-foot by 46-foot float. As you can see in the picture up there, it does taper down to five feet from an eight-foot starting width, and this will be accessed by that four-foot by 42-foot graded ramp. So for location three, this includes the removal of the 288-existing-square-foot dock, which will be replaced by a slightly larger one at 299 square feet. Similar, two 12-inch steel pilings. It has a very similar configuration to the last one, in that they are both those tapered widths that start at eight, end in five, and extends 46 feet. And this one will be accessed by that four-foot by 32-foot graded ramp. So we're here tonight because it is within shoreline jurisdiction, and this project does require a shoreline substantial development permit, as it's located within the shoreline residential, as well as the aquatic shoreline environment designation, because it is occurring landward of that ordinary high. And private piers are permitted use in this designation. So some key points and takeaways. The proposed docks, as you've heard in previous hearings, are self-mitigating this just meaning that we're removing creaseau, we're taking that old wood, that treated timber, and replacing it with graded decking, so it's just becoming less impactful overall. Again, the aquatic designation allows for the private pier's docks floats. There is no anticipated ecological function that will be lost with these proposed docks, as it's no new impact. With our current SMP joint use docks are typically encouraged over single use, so that way it just limits the amount of overwater coverage. And based on the proposed design, it does adhere to agency and SMP requirements. So with that, based upon the application materials, findings of fact, and conclusions within the staff report, which was provided, staff recommends approval to the planning commission for this shoreline substantial development permit, subject to those proposed conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the planning commissioners? I have one. Is there anything materially different about, or out of different scope or different process than the other replacement projects we've reviewed?
No.
It's quite similar.
Yeah, so I believe it's Army Corps that establishes the types of materials that are typically used for these kind of projects. So it's that graded steel, the galvanized steel pilings, and have the poly caps, so very comparable materials used in all these types of projects out there.
Any other questions by the commissioners? Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, Emily, I just want to say thanks for answering my questions this week about the distinction between the joint use and the single use. That was my only question, and you answered it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, no problem.
All right. Do we have any applicant remarks? And Ms. Martin, you had a question?
I do have a question and a comment. I really like the fact that you make sure that there is some kind of a maintenance agreement for these joint. That's awesome, that's great. But I'm not sure which one, but one of the docks is 10 feet longer, and you said something about, something about the dredge or something like that. Can you explain why that one is 10 feet longer?
So with dock length, the main intent, based on the SMP, is that it's the minimum area necessary to serve its purpose. And in this case, because this area is essentially little man-made coves, the, just the coastal push of all the, kind of blanking, the material, the dredge, as you had mentioned, it just starts accumulating, so this just allows for adequate and safety for mooring vessels, as well as navigating around. So that way you don't have them sitting down in the dirt, which is more impactful anyways.
That was my question. Because this is a man-made marina, obviously, you know, they have pulled out the dirt, the mud, or whatever is underneath there, and some of it has come back. So now, in order to mitigate that, rather than redigging it out, we've got a dock that's 10 feet longer. And so I just think, well, I wonder why it needs to be 10 feet longer? Why don't they just redig whatever they dug out in the first place? You know, because when's the next one going to be 10 feet longer, and then 10 feet longer? Or is it so that they can dock a bigger boat?
That may be part of it. I know having a father-in-law that would love to have a longer dock to accommodate a longer boat is always a goal. But I would say that for these types of projects, or the scope of this, it's not completely out of character to have it be slightly longer. As you can see by the aerial that I had in the previous slide, there are lots of those docks out there. I would say that having a slightly longer dock, from my, you know, experience in reviewing the SMP, is less impactful than having to, you know, get an excavator in there and dredge, and then dispose of all that material. It's a way to just keep, limit what impacts and what we are doing to the actual shoreline, if that makes sense.
It does. My only worry is, it's more like, I'm wondering if it could turn into a keeping up with the Joneses, my dock is longer than your dock?
Yes, I think that is a valid point. As staff, we do have the discretion that if we think this is being abused, and people are just putting in these crazy long docks with saying, you know, it's the minimum necessary, they're going to have to provide some sort of proof of that, as well as investigation as to why that is the case, which may, again, require them to actually go in and dredge and go through that permitting process, because that would require potentially a conditional use permit.
Can you tell me which of the three that you are showing, which one is the 10-foot longer?
It is location three, so the one that's 5301 and 5303 on Dune Way, so that'll be the one in red. Yeah, so it's just slightly larger, yeah, 11 feet.
I think that's kind of significant, 10 feet in that space.
I guess it's 10 square feet, because it's 288, well, roughly 10 square feet, because it's starting at 288 square feet, and it's going up to 299 square feet, which is still smaller than a couple of the other ones that we are looking at today.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Emily, I have one follow-up question, if I may. Yeah, I didn't see anything in the report, but I didn't see anything where any of the neighboring dock owners had any concerns about the expansion.
Okay, do we have any representatives for the project to speak tonight? And being heard, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public with comments?
There are no, Mr. Chair, there are no members in attendance, and there are no questions being typed in at this time.
Thank you. In that case, we will close the public hearing, and is there any further discussion by the commissioners?
I have one question. Since we're talking about square feet, the 10-square-feet, and it's five feet wide, if I then believe that this dock is two feet longer than the other one, you know, we're talking about longer, sticking out further, and all that kind of stuff. Linda Martin raised that issue. If we're, again, we're talking about square feet, and it's five feet wide, then my math skills tell me that we're only talking about a two-foot longer dock, is that correct?
Yeah, not that I mentioned it. I think that may have been a typo on my part, because, yeah, it's only an increase of 11 square feet, and I believe that one does taper down, as you stated, to five feet, which would be an additional two feet waterward.
I didn't do the math, but it seemed to me that extending the dock by 10 feet and tapering it accounts for the square footage change and the length change both.
Back to the picture, because I apologize, it's been a long day. So yes, it is an increase, because it starts at 36. You can see the underlying blue at 36. It extends to 46, but it does get narrower. So 10 by 5, I guess that would be 50 square feet.
Increase in size, okay. Do, while this process is going on, in the application process, are there any discussions, typically with neighbors, maybe not protesting, but wondering if they're going to be able to navigate in these waters, or where do those conversations take place, where people go, hey, it's going to get awfully crowded if we're putting longer boats in there, and I'm not sure I can get in and out safely with my boat? Is any, this is the fifth one of these we've done, seems like recently. So has any of those kind of, have any of those kind of conversations happened, where people worried about losing their navigation?
No, neighborhood meeting, and there was, I want to say 12, roughly 12 members of the Skyline area that attended, and most of them were happy to see that the docks were going to be updated to, you know, more environmentally friendly materials, and they don't look as junky, because I think most of these have been there for quite a while. But nobody voiced any concerns about difficulty of navigation. But I would say with this project in particular, it is beneficial that these are, again, those joint use docks, rather than having a single use dock on every single property out there, which surprisingly is allowed in really only this area of Padago Island.
Do you think the folks are doing that simply because that way they can share the cost with a neighbor?
I think so. And most of the time, you don't need an entire, you know, 300-square-foot dock to yourself. And again, yes, it takes the burden of cost down on not only maintenance, but materials and, like, these types of projects are fairly expensive, because you do have to hire a consultant in most cases, that are doing the reports and putting the packets together. And something that a lot of people aren't aware of is, our shoreline permit issued by the city is just one small piece of the much larger shoreline permitting puzzle. So you do have to receive, you know, your permits from Army Corps, in some cases Department of Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife, so there's lots of eyes that fall on these projects. So it's kind of a, it's an expensive process, to say the least.
Is the city the first or the last in that process? Are they all being done simultaneously?
Ideally, I think it would be to have them all processed the same. I do know that, like, Fish and Wildlife will not issue their hydraulic permit or project approval without having some sort of determination from the local jurisdiction, so I don't believe they have their HPA, because they can't get it until we have issued our decision.
Chair? Ms. Martin?
I'm wondering if, is Mr. Zimmerman there? Can he tell us the thinking behind the longer dock?
I understood there were no representatives present for the meeting today.
I had reached out to him, so he was aware that this was happening. I didn't hear anything back, but I did, you know, put the little piece in there that said, it's not required for you to attend, but it's definitely encouraged, because I know that the planning commission appreciates when the applicants are present, so they can ask questions.
Any other thoughts or questions from the commissioners, or further discussion?
Mr. Chair, so the 10 feet is still bothering me, because I don't think it is actually two feet more into the water. And I think Mr. Jarrettsi's, sorry, Dretzky's point of just navigating and the safety. I don't know what we can do about that, but I think we're setting a precedent by, you know, if it were two feet, I think that would be fine with me, but if it is actually 10 feet in the math, then I think that's setting not a very good precedent in that crowded little marina.
If I may, I will add one little last point that kind of can answer that, and hopefully for you. So joint use docks, currently the dimensional allowances does allow for up to 60 feet in length, and that is just for the float portion, that does not include the ramp. And that would include an eight-foot width, so you can have an eight-foot by 60-foot float outright for a shared joint use dock. So this and that sense is much less, and less of a burden. But I definitely see your point.
So are there any other limiting regulations, other than the obvious question about navigation? Do any of the other agencies have any weigh-in on this?
Not so much as the dimensional standards, I believe, but it's more the materials, the timeframe of when it's placed, how the work is being done, you know, the best management practices are being obeyed by. But typically, the local jurisdiction is what establishes those dimensional allowances.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Meesmer?
I think Ms. Morgan has done a great job of outlining the project, and I think primarily we need to keep in mind the shoreline master program allowances for the dimensions of the dock itself, the float, which, as Ms. Morgan mentioned, allows for a 60-foot dock, and it's within those dimensions, so.
Anyone else have any thoughts about this? It seems, I guess in my opinion, if the regulations allow for a 60-foot dock, I don't know why we would second-guess it, unless there were some hazard to navigation, or something that one of the agencies might be concerned about.
I guess I'm okay with the extra length also. If the other boat, if the other dock owners, boat owners in the surrounding properties haven't protested or voiced concerns about it, then maybe we're more concerned about something than the experienced boaters who have to live with this longer dock.
I agree with that, although the meeting with the neighbors took place before there was actually an application. Maybe that's fine, because there were other people that were applying at the same time or similar time. But I agree with you that other neighbors haven't complained. I think if they put a 60-foot dock in there, they would be, if you look at the circumference of that marina, you wouldn't be able to put a boat in there. But it sounds like we don't really have a whole lot of choice, as long as it's within the guidelines, and it sounds like it is within the guidelines.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mr. Mullinow, welcome.
Yeah, I keep coming up against the alternatives for this one, as I kept reading it. And the alternatives are to redredge, that is a major environmental issue. The dock itself is not significantly longer. Having been a boater a good portion of my life, I don't see navigation issue, at least from my personal experience. The second is, the replacement of these materials is a major plus on the environmental side of the equation, and if it's not out of order, I would move that we go forward with approval of the application with the conditions as specified.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion to approve SDP 21-10, subject to the staff recommended conditions of approval contained within the staff report of record. Mr. Curtis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Mullinow?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrettsi?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have two members not present. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to public hearing 2021-11, the Smith Dock Project. Do we have a staff report?
We do. So jumping right back into it, so this project is right down the street. It is for a single use dock. The applicant is the same, the Tyler Zimmerman of TZ Engineering. And again, the mandatory pre-application meeting was held on March 2nd, which included the previous project, as well as a few more that have already been decided upon. And then the mandatory neighborhood meeting was on August 12th. So just to clarify, kind of the way that our code requires application processing, prior to a formal application being submitted, you do have to do that pre-application meeting, just to kind of make sure that all your boxes are checked and all your ducks are in a row. And then if you get kind of the approval, and you've done that, then you move on to the neighborhood meeting, which is like a town hall type setting, where the applicant runs it, and staff is more just present to provide support and answer code-related questions. And so with this project, they completed those. And once that was done, they did submit the formal application on September 16th, with it being deemed complete on October 12th, and this means that it's deemed complete for processing, to go out for noticing. With that, on October 20th, the notice of application and public hearing with that optional SEPA DNS was published and posted on site. On the 19th of November is when the comment period ended. On the 24th, staff issued a determination of nonsignificance for the SEPA determination. And to explain the scope of this project, so it proposes a removal of an existing 216 square foot of overwater coverage, and this includes the existing wood float that is secured by those four creaseau pilings and a steel ramp, along with the removal of a four-foot by four-foot concrete abutment in here. So the new pier and dock is 180 square feet, so a reduction in size, which will include a six-and-a-half-foot by 30-foot float, four-foot by 40-foot graded gangway ramp, secured in place with two 12-inch steel pilings, and that original concrete abutment in here will be replaced with just a concrete abutment of four-foot by six-foot, so an overall reduction. Here is kind of the cross-section, as well as the top view of what the proposed dock and decking will look like. So this decking will allow for 62% light permeability, which is encouraged and optimal in comparison to what's currently out there, that old wood decking. Here's the cross-section that shows how it will be laid out and on the proposed concrete abutment, and the grade of the shoreline, as well as this of the piling, what we typically see, so that galvanized steel with the poly pile cap. With this one, it is located in shoreline jurisdiction, so again, that's why we're here. It is an SDP, which requires your review and approval. This one is also located in the shoreline residential environment designation, as well as the aquatic shoreline environment designation, which are both permitted for private piers and docks. Some of the key points on this one, just like the others, it is self-mitigating, we're getting rid of creaseau, we're putting graded decking, reduction in overwater coverage. The aquatic designation, again, does allow for these types of structures. There is, again, no anticipated loss of ecological function, as we have no identified habitat areas in here, and it is, you know, becoming less impactful than what currently is out there. And proposed dock structure is not increasing in size, decreasing, as well as it is designed to adhere to the agency and shoreline master program requirements. So with that, staff, similar to the last one, is recommending approval of the Planning Commission, subject to the proposed conditions of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Any questions from the Commissioners? I just, I noted that the dock is being located slightly closer to the property line. Are there any setback issues or clearance issues involved?
Side property line setback of five feet, and it is needing or exceeding that.
And one other question, the, the material for the dock itself says wood frame?
Yes, I believe it is. You'll see either that steel frame substructure, or it's a treated wood frame, and in this case, that's the direction they're going. Which is a common practice and is an allowable material based on the SMP.
So the kind of treatment is not hazardous to the aquatic environment?
Yeah, it has to be a marine grade.
That's the end of my questions. Mr. Curtis, I see you have a hand up.
Yeah, Ms. Morgan, I noticed the photograph in your presentation was from 2006. Have any of the surrounding docks been substantially changed, or is that picture still representative of the neighboring docks?
It's hard to say. We don't have the greatest aerial imagery. That was actually taken from Department of Ecology's Shoreline Coastal Atlas, which just provides kind of that more bird's-eye view, better quality than what our GIS imagery shows. So it's more just to give you that approximation of where it's located and, again, a better quality photo.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Do we have an applicant presentation here? Or any comments from the applicant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment about this particular project?
Mr. Chair, we do not have any public in attendance, and there are no questions presented at this time.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing and resume with any discussion or questions by the Commissioners. Does anyone have a sense for this particular project? None being heard. I will make a motion to approve SDP 2021-0011, subject to staff recommended conditions of approval contained within the staff reported record.
Second.
Mr. Mullinow seconds? Mr. Curtis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Mullinow?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrettski?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, and two members are absent from this meeting. Let's see. Is there any other business to attend to before we close out this meeting?
I have nothing else for you, unless Dawn has a surprise.
No other business, members of the commission, I'd just like to say thank you for your service this year, and I look forward to our meetings in the coming 2022.
Excellent, me too.
Thank you, everybody, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, y'all.